Okay. It is Tuesday, May 24th, 2022. A call me in order.
Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, I like to use that hammer. Uh, minutes, minutes and reports received in five. Commissioner Committee liaison reports, upcoming meetings and events.
Yeah, my grandpa glasses on, hold on. Can't see. Um, a slow week. I don't have anything else for the rest of the week. We got a going away party for somebody on Wednesday. Is it good Riddens party or something for Kristen?
She's gonna celebrate.
Yeah, you could try to look a little, you could look a little sadder at least. So, I think that's about it.
Hitachi, our neighbors across the river, celebrating a 50 years in the community today. Wednesday I have a H. Hartland Port meeting. And Thursday a safety committee meeting.
Okay, yeah, more I got Kristen. There's an EMS cookie eating contest too, Matt, which I'll have sauce about later. Thursday EMS.
[laughter]
Eric, 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 yeah.
I would like a regular reflective talking to Matthew Pringer.
Yeah. EMS in the U of E Thursday. Bid opening recorder software at 3:00 P. M. Friday a 9/11, 9/11 meeting, I'm sorry. Saturday a South Side Market down on Dunkland. So, that's it. Commission comments, bids and contracts, signing of the IBM Master Services Agreement.
So this is actually a supplemental document to the maintenance agreement we've signed with Huber and Associates. IBM's now requesting that this additional master services agreement be signed in conjunction with the service agreement by the providing vendor. So there's no cost to this, this is only an agreement. Jill has reviewed it. So I would ask that it be signed so we can initiate the contract.
Yep, good.
Motion to sign the IBM Master Services Agreement for Service Elite.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Signing of WIC enhancement contract amendment. Your wife's here now.
Be good.
Just the Ryan Hour show. Good morning. So Melinda's been working on this project for a while. I sent it via email. DHSS is allocating another $5,288.66 to the WIC program to do some enhancement to the rooms. You know, as you know, our clients go back to a room, our staff go in to, you know, do their consultations, issue the vouchers, things like that. But right now the rooms are very open and there's not, it doesn't really allow for social distancing. We don't have stand up workstations and our, our staff is so well loved that the kiddos like to crawl on their laps while they're trying to work on their laptops and it's really hard basically to get their job done. So Melinda worked with Jessica to get some bids starting like last September and we kind of had to go through the DHSS process to get it approved and they finally approved the funding. So if you have any more questions, Melinda's here. But this is basically just to get us extra money to kind of reconfigure those rooms a little bit.
I have sort of an unrelated question.
Sure.
Formula.
What's your question?
Yeah.
There's a shortage.
Yeah, I mean, there's a shortage nationwide and it really makes it hard on the WIC clients. Melinda and I were talking about this the other day because, you know, you're given your card and you have a proxy for it, but now everybody else can use it. They don't work everywhere. So, you know, if grandpa sees formula at Sam's, he can't pick it up for a WIC client because number one, he's not a proxy for the card and number two, Sam doesn't, Sam's doesn't take the WIC card. So it's especially hard on the WIC clients because, you know, they might have special formula that they need for their babies and they just can't get it anywhere. So it's a really bad situation and we've been doing what we can to help, you know, facilitate people getting what they need or making connections and Onepluses, the Milk Bank, you know, we're a depot for the Milk Bank in Indiana. It's really been getting a lot of press and we've gotten increased donors from around central Missouri because we're the only milk depot in central Missouri. So people are, you know, driving here from Owensville and Columbia to make their donations and we're shipping it to the Milk Bank so they can pasteurize it and homogenize it and they give some to the babies in the NICU and then they're also giving some to outreach, outreach to people who need it, I think about 40 ounces, which is better than nothing until people can get some formula.
That's a very proper answer.
Thank you for that.
She'd be great.
I'll offer a motion to sign the WIC enhancement contract amendment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Bid award for 2022-505-1 Woods Crossing Road pavement replacement.
So Friday we opened bids for the Woods Crossing Road pavement replacement. Low bid was GWH Landscape Contracting for a price of $243,981.75. The engineer's estimate was $235,024. This project will involve replacing concrete pavement and concrete curb and gutter on Woods Crossing Road and an edge drain will be added behind the curb and gutter on the north side to help drain water away from the road. Public Works Department recommends awarding this base bid. And this is the same contractor we had for Darby Place, which we've received high accolades for and we have worked on with him on a couple of other projects.
You received six bids, right?
We did.
Okay. What will be the start date, do you think?
I will have to give it to contractor on that and we'll finalize all that after the bids are awarded, so.
Because these residents out there have been asking for this one?
For a while.
Yeah, okay.
I was just looking at the bids, I didn't see that attached to the other stuff, so. So, okay, yep.
And this one came in actually a little above the engineer, right? It's been running the other way lately, hasn't it?
Lately it has.
Okay. I'll make a motion to award the bid and sign the contract for the Woods Crossing Road pavement replacement.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, unfinished business, we've got some old.
Did we do the award and the contract in the same? Okay.
Aye.
Very good.
We've got some old business. The grant to the PA grant. There, boys, talk about perfect timing.
I know, but I have to type through Sam.
That's fine.
I like stuff I have to initial each page.
Yeah, this is just a renewal of the VAWA grant that we've previously entered for the domestic violence prosecutor position, so.
Let me just get the language right here. I make a motion to sign the 2022-2023 Stop Violence Against Women, paren, V.A.W.A., close paren.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
No, we got to prove. Yeah.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Okay, I'll leave that.
Run, run, lock, run.
Okay, that's old business. New business accounts payable review.
We do not have any accounts payable.
Okay. Second and final reading of budget adjustment number three.
This is for an additional $450 for cybersecurity for one NICS grants in addition to, I do need action today to change the budget.
Make a motion to sign budget adjustment number two for $450.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Budget adjustment number three.
Yeah, budget adjustment number three, I'm sorry.
Yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, second and final reading of budget adjustment number four.
This is for $2 million. This is the grant for the EMS receipt from Minmo RPC.
Make a motion, sign budget adjustment number four for $2 million.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. Okay, we're moving to signing of management with Williams Keepers to after our close. So we will go to approval of support letter for MoDOT Freight Enhancement Program Grant.
So we've been working with J.C. Rep. and Minmo RPC to submit a grant application to MoDOT for the Freight Enhancement Program for the Multimodal Transload Facility. Luke Holt Snyder from J.C. Rep.'s here in support of them and the project. Pretty sizable project we've been working on. It goes back to October, November last year when it first, the concept of it started coming about. This MoDOT grant would be in, we're submitting in the amount of 880,000 or represents 50% of Phase One of the project. And so we need a letter of support from the County Commission to include with this grant application and it states that the county is committed to funding support for the match. If awarded, the money would have to be spent by July of 2023. This is a short term grant. Applications are actually due June 1st or so, 3rd or so, but very short duration, short notification. And so J.C. Rep. and Minmo RPC got together along with us and put this thing together pretty quick. Because of the way the money has to be spent, we had to split the, the actual project into Phase One and Phase Two to be able to get the funding to work out to get the maximum amount that we could for the grant and to have it spent by July of 2023 next year. So you'll see in your packet there an attached estimate that splits it two ways. The total project cost is estimated at three, a little over 3.1 million. An EDA grant application was submitted back in March for 1.5 million. May 10th, we received a letter stating that the project has been reviewed and selected for further consideration, which is a good sign. So with the anticipated receipt of 1.5 million for this project, we still need 1.663 for the remaining. And this grant from MoDOT would cover over half of that. And so we just need a, a signed letter of support. I have the final draft version of that for your signatures if you're so inclined to do so. Do you have any questions?
No, it's a no brainer.
Yes.
You're earning your salary.
Make a motion to sign the Multimodal Transload Facility Letter of Support.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, yeah. Okay. Application for the Cole County Multimodal Transload Facility.
That's the second line of the first one.
Oh, that's second, okay. Multi.
Is this for the letters for?
Multimodal Transload Facility, signing of letters for the Indian Nations Project Review and Comment Request.
So with the anticipated receipt of the EDA grant, we're now moving on to some of the preliminary phases of the project. And one of those, as required by federal law, is that we allow the Indian tribes to comment and submit, or review and submit comments about the project to us and there's some deadlines on that. So it's more of just a process thing for us to do. There's 13 letters to sign and we just need commission agreement to sign those and once they're signed, I'll process the packet and send them out to the 13 different tribes.
Good?
Yes.
Yes.
Make a motion to sign the Letter for Indian Nations Project Review and Comment Request.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, computer aided dispatch discussion.
All right, so I will do my best to make this snappy, but it might get a little bit long winded. A little brief history currently, for 911 Communications, we operate out of two different communication centers. You call 911 in Cole County, that call is routed to the Jefferson City Police Department where it is answered and the initial call taking begins. If it's a medical emergency, that call is then transported, transferred to Cole County EMS for further pre arrival emergency medical instructions and dispatching of medical resources. This is a system that the four public safety chiefs with a financial interest have inherited. It's worked, but there are inefficiencies and we are quickly reaching a point where we either need to make some sizable capital investments or look at other ways of doing business. So early this year, the four public safety leaders who, who have a financial investment in 911 Communications got together and we produced a letter that was sent to the elected officials, basically stating our intent of looking at a new way of doing business, a way to work better cooperatively and become more efficient in, in what we do. That letter, I believe, was well received. We received instructions to keep moving forward, so we went ahead and started formalizing that process. A group was created, made up of the public safety officials, elected officials from the city and the county, some partners from economic development, emergency management. And those meetings initially started in April, early April of this year. So really our goal is to try and develop how we can better efficiently serve people during emergencies. And one of the things that, that came out of that group fairly early on was the need to integrate some of our computer software and, which will allow us to, to reduce some of the duplication, better share information and really speed up the process of dispatching resources. We were presented with a couple of different options. The city currently operates computer aided dispatch software. We as county EMS operate a separate system. We feel that it makes sense to join under one type of software, which allows the computers and the information to be shared instantaneously, no matter where you are. So we put together a technical subgroup to try and figure out the best way to do that. We explored numerous different options and we really arrived back at a point where the only way to make this happen and make it function the way that we want to would be us joining the city under their current license of CAD software. Basically what that means is they would, they've already established on the Tyler Technologies software, we would kind of rebid and join them and build our own EMS part. The sheriff would come onboard as well. So basically it would be one system for all the public safety agencies within Cole County. That's kind of where the conversation has led. So in order to start accomplishing some of the things that we have laid out, we really feel that that software piece is the first hill that we need to kind of accomplish and move past. With the opportunity of ARPA funding, we felt that this would be a very appropriate use of some of those dollars, federal dollars that were laid out. So through conversations, we went ahead and made a request. You were each provided a breakdown of that request, which totals 2.584 million in and of itself, but the software piece comes out to 1.288 million, which is what we want to discuss right now. So without rambling too much further, questions, comments?
There's some sense of urgency because of if we don't get it started soon enough, we're going to incur a annual service fee, is that right?
So, so currently EMS and the Sheriff's Department operate their own version of software. That software is on a yearly maintenance contract. Given the build time of undergoing a, and taking on this brand new system, we're really looking at early 2023 if we were to sign a contract and start the process of building this new software today. What we don't want to do is get into a position where we have to renew and now stuck with two maintenance fees for the second half of 2023. So that's why we really want to get this piece lined up. Obviously, this is one small part of the overall direction we are moving with public safety communications, but it's really that first piece to, to start building a foundation of what we kind of think communications will look like in the future. So while this is a big number to start, I will just say that this is really the first couple steps in a marathon of where we need and want to eventually end up with communications. But we cannot go any further unless we take this first step.
Yeah, I've been sitting in on the meetings and I think the cooperation between our, our four chiefs is, is fantastic. So we have never, we've never had anything like this before, so I, I think it's very appreciative and in the long run, it's going to make it much more efficient. Yeah, it just needs to be done.
So I think the, the action that we are requesting today is that we, for this agenda item, go ahead and receive permission to move forward with the funding of the 1.288 million for the CAD software. We will circle back with Tyler Technologies and get a contract drafted for both the sheriff and I to join the city system. There's quite a lot, lot of technical work that needs to occur on the backend before we actually start moving forward and undergoing the build stuff. So it's pretty imperative that we start getting that done as soon as possible. So if you would be willing to fund that portion today, we'll go ahead and circle back with Tyler and get a contract drafted and start moving towards the next steps.
You have a chance to go and look at this stuff?
We, we actually did a pilot and the pilot was successful.
He's been working with the city's IT too. He's an integral part of this, so a lot rides on you.
That's why I'm asking him because we run into a lot of stuff that, that's 1.28 million and then when you get down into it, there's another big chunk of money. So is that 1.28 a one time cost or is there going to be something that we have to?
So the 1.28 is to get us on the system. There is a yearly maintenance fee, but we are already paying those yearly maintenance fees with our current vendors.
Yeah, deserved.
It, I believe it's actually less than what we're.
Even better.
Yeah.
Don't quote me on that, but I'm.
This price is.
Oh, no, quote me on it.
Yeah.
It'll be higher for me.
Higher for the sheriff, but lower for EMS.
The reason being is, is that he's only getting two modules and if you look, I'm getting one, two, three, I'm getting five modules, so, because I have to jail and report management and civil management. So with all those modules in place, you gotta pay maintenance on all of them. And basically, you know, for, for information on how this works is, you know, this is a system that basically when a 911 call comes in, they start putting in the information, it maps it, it goes through a whole protocol of, you know, what resources get sent. You know, it allows us as we're responding to see the call details, any previous history added and address, if there are any alerts. So this is really a very crucial piece to not only making sure that we have information when we're responding to incidents, but also keeping us aware of any potential hazards that we may be getting ourselves into. So.
So when I call into 911, I've got an emergency, it's an EMS emergency, then I get transferred the information I already gave them, maybe an address is being transferred at the same time. You don't have to start all over.
Correct.
Score one, so you save that much time.
So, so currently, if you were to call 911 for a medical emergency, you would give your address to the PD, the Jefferson City Police Department first. That call would then be transferred to EMS. We would have to, we now have to restart the entire question taking process and get your address again. And this is pretty frustrating, you know, we see this quite often where, you know, in the heat of a medical emergency, somebody doesn't want to give their address and answer the same questions over and over again. That's currently how we operate with the new system that when they open that call, that will, that call will be seamlessly transferred between EMS and the PD so that all that information is uploaded in real time. They don't have to re-ask the same questions over and over again. I'll actually hit your trucks too. Yes.
Yeah, so it's, it's going to be much more efficient and actually get our ambulances out quicker. So if you're laying on the floor, turning blue, you know, they will be there quicker.
So it's our software, our hardware, you just, you're under the city within that software better?
Nope. So the city will maintain the actual hardware infrastructure. We looked at both options of having two separate instances, so two different pieces of hardware. By doing that, we would lose some of the functionality of, of the system, which would not allow us to accomplish the goals that we set out to do. So really, joining under the city's system, we would be a, a co-consumer with them, but they would house the hardware and the technical piece. So that really circles back to Brian and his group of working with the city's IT folks to make sure that those processes and workloads are shared evenly.
And according to Lieutenant Steve Ferman, since we signed this, Tyler Technologies can actually start working on it, that is this going to be a lot quicker?
Sure.
Hardware's server, this are the server, they're going to host, they're going to host the software and we'll still have our ADBs and everything else to be there.
And, you know, one of the pieces that we haven't really necessarily gotten into and that we can't get into until we've actually agreed to move forward is really evaluating MOUs and the technical piece and how those processes work between us and the city. We've received positive reinforcement from the city administrator that the city does support this process and that they are also willing partners in this and that they believe that this is the right way to go. So they are willing to work with us and do whatever it takes to, to make this work, but we just need to start the process.
It, my, my memory is, a recollection, this, this thing surfaced more than a year ago, this Tyler, the term Tyler started popping up, but it was a bridge too far prior to ARPA. I mean, we just didn't have that much money that we wanted to throw at it at that time, I think. Is that right?
So with, with the current CAD system that we are using from an EMS standpoint, we have been exploring an option for an upgrade and going in a different direction for, since prior to my arrival.
Right.
ARPA, the, the dollar amount and, and some of the difficulties that were there in the past kind of prevented us from exploring this avenue. But with ARPA funding and some of the changes in philosophy really have allowed us to move in a different direction that now not only make it financially feasible, but also probably more efficient and more streamlined for, for the overall consumers.
Kristen, do we, as we treat this as ARPA, do, does it fall under the, the first 10 or outside of that, first 10 million or not?
I think it can fall either way.
Okay.
So I would consider this a governmental service that we already provide, so you could fall under that standard allowance. But I think it would qualify under public health and safety as well as a qualified expense. You can run that through BKD and make sure they agree, but I think it could fall on either side.
Okay.
That's kind of what I talked about the last time, it's passing it on again, once we got the updated numbers.
Okay.
So I guess the end goal at some point is that of a joint 911 communications, and this would ultimately be one of the first steps in that direction, right?
Yeah, I think we're fairly early on in, I don't want to say that joint communications is the way, you know, I don't want to put a label on it. We want to have the most efficient communication system that there is, and what that looks like, we're not even remotely at a point where we can start painting that picture. But if we want to start moving down that path and streamlining these types of operations, this is the first step to get us there.
Yeah, whatever name you want to.
It's a dedicated 911, so.
Do we have some kind of, I don't know, agreement with the city at this point that they're going to stay with Tyler for a certain amount of time? Like, we're not going to put all this out there and then they're going to decide to switch vendors?
No, they're not, they're not even looking to change vendors at any time.
Okay.
We kind of have something like this already with the 911 that we pay for, and they ultimately run it, and we kind of.
We do have an MOU that we pay 25% of the 911.
And we're working on, Brian and the IT departments are working on bullet points for another MOU to make sure that this flows like it's supposed to. So, and that's, again, the four entities that are involved in this are working together better than I can imagine.
That's great, yeah.
And one of the other things that I will point out in here is that you will see that there's a $250,000 line item for infrastructure repair. And what that really is talking about is changing and adding some features to the EMS dispatch center specifically related to phones and the 911 system that the PD is currently using. What we would use that money for is to basically set up our dispatch consoles to have the same functionality that the PD does. And what that ends up doing is it allows for greater redundancy in disaster or abnormal operations. If we are all on the same software, if our dispatching consoles all look the same, let's say that the EMS building has a fire or something like that, our dispatchers can pick up, either move to the PD or move to the city fire station three where the backup dispatch center is, and allow that interoperability. We do not have that right now.
Yep.
I don't have any more questions.
So, does this take a motion to move forward with the first piece of the software CAD with the city at a estimated cost of 1.288 million? At what, to be funded with ARPA funds?
And I would suggest that you send that to BKD for their review to help you decide which bucket, so to say, it falls into.
With BKD to assist in determining the funding stream.
That's the motion?
That's the motion.
Okay, second. Did you get all that?
No.
Any other discussion?
I know what he is saying.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Great presentation. Matt, I'm sorry.
You want to know where he barks?
I know where he barks.
He knows. Okay, now you're going to stay up.
I am.
ARPA funding ventilators.
So, our initial request of the 2.5 million was really a placeholder for a bunch of infrastructure upgrades that we wanted to accomplish. As we just talked about, one of those buckets was software. A second portion is radios, and we can get into that today, or we can skip that piece. The third piece, which is more pressing and the point on the agenda, is the miscellaneous bucket. Specifically for me, that was the new ventilators that we purchased at the time. We decided to purchase those out of my contingency due to the time sensitivity of that. That bill is now due, the ventilators are here, we're starting training on them. The final bill came back at $200,684. Also, in that miscellaneous is the $70,000 for the sheriff's law enforcement academy scholarships. I think for accounting purposes, the auditor is requesting that we approve that miscellaneous bucket so that we can at least get the EMS ventilators paid for out of ARPA funds instead of doing the backend accounting and moving money around in the future. So if that is still where we are going and we want to purchase those with ARPA funds, we would ask that we also get the miscellaneous bucket approved today as well. Are you good with the scholarship piece?
I didn't even know we had buckets yet.
Well, it's our bucket, it's not yours yet.
It's out of our, it's out of our request, so we initially made that 2.5 request to you as a placeholder. We've now broken that down into three sections. So, out of our 2.5 request, we would ask that you approve about 1.5 of that today. We can save the radio conversation for a different day unless we want to get into that.
So the 2.5 is the total request?
Correct. We're asking you to fund roughly half of it.
And we need to get something moving on the CAD thing because there's a sense of urgency as far as having to pay two services or whatever.
In the ventilator piece, we actually have the first invoice to pay. We would like to pay for it out of ARPA if that is your plan.
That's what you showed me the other day. Was that the piece of equipment you showed me? Yes?
I don't think we ever said that 2.5 was necessarily for sure in that bucket for you guys, so I don't know if there was a sense of urgency. You had the money and contingency for your ventilators. So, I hadn't really thought about that a whole lot, so I know you gave us the paper this morning, and I know y'all were asking 2.5. We did talk about the CAD thing, getting that moving, and I agree, there's a sense of urgency on that one.
We talked about the radios also, that'll make Cole County most win capable.
I know, but y'all had money for that already.
Not every entity, not every entity there does.
Because we had his and contingency even more of what yours coming from is.
Well, if you're, I mean, if you're just talking about us, too, I'm good with that. We can move forward with our contingency funds, but Public Works, Health Department, medical first responders, fire districts, they don't have that, those funding to be able to buy those radios. So that's why I was saying whenever at the beginning on the most win radios, to make everyone most win capable. If you don't want to do it, I mean, I'm.
I'm just looking at the money, because we got, we had a lot of money. We don't have a lot of money anymore.
But this would be out of our internal, the 10 million.
It's all kind of money. We have 15 million, and it's down, it is dwindling fast, and we have so many, there's so many applications that are going to come in.
But that, this is.
We still have the money. We have, the only, the only ARPA money we've spent.
Just spent 1.2 here and.
Well, okay, but.
Some on salaries, so.
No.
There's only two items that have fully been approved, and that is the premium pay and the BKD contract. Those are the only two items.
And this that we just approved today.
Yeah.
Which is 1.9 here today, close. Premium pay is 58,000 per pay period. What was the other one? Oh, BK.
The BK, which we've spent very little of.
Yeah.
Right.
No, I think all of this should come out of our internal ARPA monies because.
I think for reporting purposes, if we can pay it directly out of that fund, it will be easier than trying to pay out of contingency, transfer money around. Those reporting requirements are quarterly, so if you pay it out of your contingency in one quarter and then you're paying it out in a different quarter, it gets messy.
Right.
So, the easiest, most simple way would be to pay it directly out of ARPA if that's your plan.
I agree, if it's our plan, but we never really sat down and talked about if it was coming out of ARPA until right now. So, we've, we've got, we've got the money, okay, whether we've still got a lot or we've spent a lot, I mean, spending over a million is a lot of money, we just did that today. And each time we do that, it's going to keep getting lower and lower, and we've got Public Works, Emergency Services, Pringer Center, and that's just internal stuff and buildings that we need to work on, that this money, because it's one-time money.
I will say that their public safety requests hit multiple agencies, which is nice because we are trying to work together and cooperatively come up with those projects. I mean, the radios is, how many agencies?
Every fire district, sheriff's department, EMS, Public Works, Health Department, first responders, ERT, so.
It's a bunch.
Two, four, six.
I agree.
Yeah, and I mean, I feel like the CAD system is those four coming together.
I'm okay moving forward with this today, because it does affect a lot of agencies, and there is the paperwork of it, too, that's going to be cleaner.
So, so I think.
But we got to figure out what tell we're going to do with this money. We don't even have an application out, so we don't even have an idea of who's going to apply for it, and the forms that we did, the assessment forms, that was a waste of time, and, you know, that's just a portion of what we're going to have, asking for the money.
Well, we've had this, your application for quite a while.
It's not an application.
I agree.
How can you apply for if we don't have applications?
So the piece that we are, we can leave the radios, which is a million dollars, we can leave that to debate at another time. There is no, at this point, there's not a lot of time urgency in the radio request. With the software, we appreciate you approving that today, that is a time-sensitive thing. With the miscellaneous funding, with the academy scholarships and the ventilators, we've already purchased the ventilators out of contingency. I'm sure the sheriff will continue to fund scholarships from some other avenue out of his budget. So it just comes down to, for this $271,000, is do we want to spend that on ARPA funds? If so, I think we probably need to do that today. If not, and we're going to leave it out of contingency, I have no problem with it.
I just, we don't have a process, but we have a process for approving our own stuff or whatever we're doing to circumvent a process. So, that's just part of my frustration with not even having an application out there yet. Yes, I'm fine with spending ARPA money on it, so. What do we need to do?
I feel like at this point, you need to set aside some of the ARPA funding for these internal-type purchases. You've chosen to take that standard allowance, which allows you to use 10 million of it for governmental services. I think you don't have to set aside the whole 10 million, but I would say you need to come up with a bucket of money that you are willing.
That's the conversations that we haven't had, though, and now we're taking money out of buckets that we don't even have. So, either that or we're taking money out of a big bucket and just making buckets as we go, so.
You've made a presentation to us when we had the advisory committee.
So did a lot of people.
This is, no.
Yeah.
No.
Public Works would like to have a Wash building and a whole new administration building and move things around, so you could, you could do that today. Look at Eric, he's around the corner. Pringer Center's got some needs, we got a lot of other needs, too, so.
The 2.5 million has been on the table for.
So I think.
It's all on the table, we haven't had anybody apply for stuff.
So.
We've had forms.
I know it's easy to focus on the 2.5 million. What we're asking for is action on the $271,000. We can debate the million dollars for the radios through whatever ARPA process we want, that's fine. And if you tell me that we don't want to fund the ventilators and the scholarships out of ARPA funding, that's fine, we can take that out of contingency, I don't have a problem. But just for the accounting piece of it, if we are going to do that out of ARPA.
We have that first invoice in.
Yes.
I am fine with taking it out of ARPA, so, Harry, you're.
Well, so am I. I'm about to offer a motion here to see if we shoot it or salute it, as we would say. So, I have a motion to fund via ARPA with W, I'm sorry, not W, BKD's blessings, I'm getting my firms mixed back here, with BKD's weighing in on the spending 271, I'm sorry, $200,684. 86 cents on it, did you say?
84 cents.
84 cents, plus the 70,000 for the sheriff's law enforcement, help me out.
Academy scholarships.
Academy scholarships.
That it?
That's it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And on the radios, Luke and Nick check, because I think President Biden just released like 45 billion with all the shootings, that will even buy police cars. Use them on the radio, let's get radios.
We will circle back to the radios a different day. Thank you.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, we're going to do, we're going to do two closed sessions, because we're going to do the communication between public body and its auditor first, then come back into open session and do the signing of management representation letter with Williams Keepers, and then we'll go back into closed session. Kristin said.
I'll offer a motion to go into closed session pursuant to 610.021 of the revised statutes of Missouri. Commission will go into closed session to discuss the following: Communication between public body and its auditors, section 610.021 subsection 17.
Second.
We're all call?
Sam.
Yes.
Gary.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Okay.
You got it.
Yep.
Music.